Okay, good evening, everyone. I am so excited this evening to present to you Mr. Thomas Becknow, who is someone I know personally, knew his daddy from a childhood friend. He is a 12th grader at Honville High School, who's going to lead us in a prayer before the pledge. Thomas is a member of the Honville High School Band, swim team, Beta Club, National Honor Society, Talented Art, and president of the National Art Honor Society. Thomas was awarded Summa cum laude, the Dow Award of Scholastic Achievement, and was a finalist for the Student of the Year. After graduation, Thomas plans to attend the Illinois Institute of Technology to major in psychology. Man, you are a young man of many talents.
Thank you.
And we are so proud to have you with us for this moment of reflection this evening. Thank you for coming. Thomas is going to give us that moment of reflection. Following that, Mr. John Smith will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
God, I stand here today in a time full of division and adversity, asking for you to impart upon us the virtues of wisdom, compassion, and strength. Lord, give us wisdom, the wisdom to look forward to a future brighter than our past, to take actions that may unburden the struggles of today, and to learn from the sorrows of yesterday. Lord, give us compassion, the compassion to understand the struggles of others, to acknowledge our duty towards self and community, and to act with love in the face of hatred. And finally, Lord, give us strength, as without it, there can be no wisdom or compassion. Give us the strength to accept the mistakes and horrors of the past. Give us the strength to be compassionate to others, even when it means sacrificing convenience. And give us the strength, the fortitude of character, the endurance of will, to work together, united as a school board, a community, and a nation with the single goal of making tomorrow better, happier, and safer than yesterday. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, Thomas. That was beautiful. And we will carry your words in our hearts. Thank you. All right. I call to order the meeting of St. Charles Parish Public School Board for Wednesday, January 27, 2021. Our world call, item 1.03. I'm happy to say that all board members are present this evening. Also joining with us is our superintendent, Dr. Ken Ortling, and our board secretary, Ms. Shelley Bavino. Welcome all.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Can I take a personal point of privilege, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'd like to take this opportunity to say a few words about our past immediate president, Mr. Sonny Savoy. First, I'd like to thank you, Mrs. Savoy, for this past year's service as our board president. You have led us through an extraordinary, challenging, yet productive year. Despite the many trials, you have helped guide the school system with the board through a global pandemic. Significant investments were made in special education and mental health initiatives that addressed the social-emotional needs of our students. With you and the board's approval, we launched an expansion of pre-K four classes, a new e-learning program, ensured every child has a technology device and internet access, and our employees received a much-deserved 2% pay raise. Additionally, we continue to see numerous distinguished recognitions, including Miss Angel Bourgeois as a Louisiana Elementary Teacher of the Year, NICH number-two best school districts in Louisiana, and number-one best school district in the New Orleans area, 2020 Best Communities for Music Education, and 14 NISBRA Publication and Digital Media Awards, to name a few. These accomplishments are significant and have allowed us to be in a position to continue to succeed and make a difference for every student at every moment. Thank you for your support and commitment to our students, employees, and community. And here's a special token of our appreciation for your service.
Thank you, Dr. Ortling. It's been a real honor and a privilege to be this year to serve this board. And I would humbly thank you for those kind words. But I need to do this on. I've said many times, a lot of places that I've gone, we've got an outstanding board, an outstanding superintendent and staff who do the right things right. And I think that's what sets us apart from any other school district across the state and across the country. And we did have a very interesting year last year, five hurricanes and a pandemic. But I'd like to commend you and your staff for the outstanding work that y'all had done to make sure that every student in St. Charles Parish has the opportunity to become whatever they want to be. And it takes hard work, you know, from the janitors all the way up to the superintendent. Everybody shared the load, did the work, sometimes more than a woman's job at doing the work. And so I'd like to commend those folks who on a daily basis, you know, take care of our kids and make sure that they're well-fed and well-taught, you know, and will move on to the next stage of their lives. But I'd like to especially thank Melinda Bernard, who stood in for me at times this year when I was dealing with COVID. Everything's all good now. And so, you know, actually, I'm happy about that. But thanking Ms. Bernard.
You're most welcome.
And I wish you all success in this coming year.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Glad to have you helping.
And I'd also like to thank Mr. Knockan, who was on our executive committee, for his help also in this project here. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will move on to our resolutions and proclamations. Item 2.01, Louisiana School Board Recognition Month Resolution. I would ask Mr. Al Sufferin if he would please read that one for us.
Thank you, Madam President. Louisiana School Board Recognition Month Resolution. Whereas the education of Louisiana's school-aged children is the foundation upon which the economic, social, and intellectual capital of our state is built. And whereas locally-elected school boards play an important and vital role in a representative democracy, and decisions made by local boards of education directly influence instruction in Louisiana's public schools. And whereas these decisions affect the present and future lives of children and also set direction to prepare all students to be competitive in a local, state, national, and global 21st-century economy. And whereas local school board members work with parents, businesses, education professionals, all elected officials, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. And whereas this year's theme, "School Boards Matter", reflects the relevance of local school board members as they advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders. And whereas School Board Recognition Month provides an opportunity to build stronger relationships between the thousands of people in Louisiana who champion the mission of public education and school board members. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Louisiana School Boards Association recognizes the contributions of the state's local school boards to the academic success of its public school students and expresses its sincerest recognition to the local school board members for their focus on the well-being and achievement of children throughout the state. And be it finally resolved, the St. Charles Parish Public School Board declares January 2021 as School Board Member Recognition Month and encourages local school districts and community leaders to appropriately recognize our state's dedicated school board members. And I move for approval of this resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sufferin, second by Mr. Robisho. Any discussion? Hearing none. Please cast your vote. Item 2.01 passes unanimously. Item 2.02, School Board Member Training Resolution. I would ask Mr. Sonny Savoy if he would read that one for us, please.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, sir.
It'd be my pleasure. Whereas each member of a city and parish school board shall receive a minimum of six hours of training and instruction as required by Act 705 of the 2011 Louisiana Legislature. And whereas this training and instruction shall consist of of school laws of this state, laws governing the powers, duties, and responsibilities of city, parish, school boards, educational trends, research, and policy. And whereas such instruction may be received from the institution of higher education in this state, from instruction sponsored by the State Department of Education, or by an in-service training program conducted by a city or parish school board central office or the Louisiana School Boards Association, or sessions provided by the National School Boards Association. And whereas each member of a city and parish school board shall receive one hour of ethics training per year of their tenure as a board member. Now, therefore, be it resolved that it become public record that Ellis A. Alexander, Arthur A. Okwan, Melinda H. Bernard, Dennis J. Knockan, John W. Robisho, John L. Smith, Clarence H. Savoy, and Alex L. Sufferin, members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, have successfully received and exceeded the six hours of required training as mandated by the Legislature of Louisiana. And all board members have fulfilled the mandate of one-hour ethics training for the year of 2020. And I move for its adoption.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Savoy and a second by Mr. Okwan. Any discussion? Hearing none. Please cast your vote.
I gotta go back and log in. Yes.
Item 2.02 passes unanimously. Item 2.03, National School Counselors Week Proclamation. I would ask Mr. Alexander if he would read that proclamation for us.
Madam President, it's my honor.
Thank you.
St. Charles Parish Public Schools Counselors Week Proclamation. Whereas school counselors are toward the schools to help students reach their full potential. Whereas school counselors are actively committed to help their students explore their abilities, threats, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development. Whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the education, personal and social growth of their children. Whereas school counselors work with teachers and other agencies to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. Whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. Whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered a integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, hereby proclaim February 1 through 5, 2021, as School Counselor's Week in St. Charles Parish Public Schools, and urge all students, as well as parents and guardians, to become familiar with and utilize the essentials that support our services offered by our school counselors. And I hold that we adopt this proclamation.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Alexander and a second by Mr. Sufferin. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Please cast your vote. Item 2.03 passes unanimously. And at this time, I would welcome Curriculum Specialist of Student Support, Dr. Alice Cryer Sumler, to recognize the counselors who are present. Thank you, Dr. Cryer. Dr. Sumler.
Good evening.
Good evening.
School board members, counselors, administrators, community members, important stakeholders. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize our professional school counselors during National School Counseling Week. This year's theme is "All In for All Students." We know that our counselors work hard throughout the year, and they uphold this theme on a daily basis. Therefore, during the week of February 1 through the 5, we want to focus on the public attention on the unique contributions of school counselors within the United States, our school system, but especially in St. Charles Parish Public Schools. This week, we want to highlight the tremendous impact our school counselors have in helping students eliminate barriers to achieve school success and support their plans for a career after high school. At this time, I would like to recognize the counselors who are here tonight by saying their name and their school, and they will wave to you from the back. First, we will start with Ms. Amanda Bourgeois at Destrehan High School. Ms. Bonnie Mays, Destrehan High School. Dr. Iman Inneba, Landry Alternative Center. Tiffany Matthews, J.B. Martin Middle School. Jennifer Viall, J.B. Martin Middle School. Tina Shasson, Harry Hurst Middle School. Shannon Salisbury, New Sarpy Elementary School. And her principal, Ms. Becky Matherne, came to support her. Frank Clavel, Luling Elementary School. Selena Amiro, Luling Elementary School. Lori Gonzalez, Mimosa Park Elementary. Katie Gabriel, St. Rose Elementary School. In closing, our professional school counselors are positive influences in our schools for our students through their leadership, their advocacy, collaboration, and systemic change. We truly appreciate and value our counselors and thank them for being all-in for all students every single day. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cryer Sumler. We had a few minutes as board members to go and speak with our counselors to let them know how much we appreciate their dedication and their efforts in helping our children to be the best they can be. So we appreciate them coming this evening. Moving on, we have item 2.04, Digital Citizenship Month Proclamation. And I would please ask Mr. Okwan, Mr. Art Okwan, would you read that one for us, please?
I'd be honored, Madam President.
Thank you.
Digital Citizenship Month Proclamation. Whereas St. Charles Parish Public School recognizes that our students are members of an increasingly connected digital society. And whereas curriculum, instruction, and assessment is increasingly being assessed through a variety of online learning platforms that transform the way our students explore, create, connect, and learn. And whereas St. Charles Parish Public School uses digital resources to provide innovative, meaningful, and equitable educational experiences across the district. And whereas St. Charles Parish Public Schools is committed to creating a culture of learning that prepares students to become future-ready. And whereas St. Charles Parish Public Schools is committed to supporting educators and parents in preparing students to use digital media while limiting the risks of the online world, such as loss of privacy, cyberbullying, and copyright infringement. And whereas raising awareness of responsible digital citizenship is beneficial to the safety and well-being of our students and their families. And St. Charles Parish now, therefore, be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board hereby proclaim the month of February 2021, Digital Citizenship Month. And I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Okwan and a second by Mr. Robisho. Any discussion? Hearing none. Please cast your vote. Item 2.04 passes unanimously. Item 2.05, Career and Technical Education Month Proclamation. I would ask Mr. J. Robisho if you would please read that one for us. Thank you.
My pleasure. Career and Technical Education Month Proclamation. Whereas the month of February 2021 has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association of Career and Technical Education. And whereas profound economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of work, therefore placing new and additional responsibilities on our education system. And whereas career and technical education provides Americans with a school-to-career connection and is the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce which fosters productivity in business and industry and contributes to America's leadership in the international marketplace. And whereas career and technical education gives high school students experience in practical, meaningful applications of basic skills such as reading, writing, and mathematics, sorry, thus improving the quality of their education, motivating potential dropouts, and giving all students leadership opportunities in their fields and in their community. And whereas career and technical education offers individuals lifelong opportunities to learn new skills which provide them with career choices and potential satisfaction. And whereas the ever-increasing cooperative efforts of career and technical educators, business and industry stimulant, and growth and vitality of our local economy and that of the entire nation by preparing graduates for career fields forecast to experience in largest and fastest growth in the next decade. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, in conjunction with the Association of Career and Technical Education, hereby proclaim the month of February 2021 as Career and Technical Education Month and urge all citizens to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by the career and technical education programs in this community and to support and participate in those programs to enhance their individual work skills and productivity. And I move approval.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Robisho and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none. Please cast your vote. Item 2.05 passes unanimously.
Madam President, I'd like to invite Mr. Ronnie Seal, the Curriculum Specialist for School of Career, to come up and say a few words, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Board. Normally, we would have our career and technical educators join us so that they could witness this official proclamation and the support that you are showing for them in that. Unfortunately, they're not able to be with us because they would take up half the room. So, and what I'm hoping is that these few words that I share with you will express our support for our career and technical education program in addition to this proclamation that you've given for them. In a normal year, our career and technical educators are tasked with the monumental responsibility of training high school students using industry-level curriculum designed to prepare adults for industry-based certifications. In itself, this is worthy of accolades. Now, consider having to do this ordinarily challenging task in extraordinary circumstances. And that's exactly what our career and technical educators are having to do this year. Imagine teaching skills such as cooking, developing business plans for Shark-Take presentations, carpentry skills, electrical skills, welding skills, instrumentation, mastering advanced software used by industry, medical assisting, engineering, computer programming, and so forth. In a hybrid and virtual world, all in an effort to equip students with opportunities for entrance into a career path. The career and technical education teachers have adapted and have adopted new teaching tools and methods. In addition to having to learn how to use learning management systems like Google Classroom with their students, many of the career and technical educators have had to learn additional industry-level learning online programs which provide their students with access to the same training platforms as industry professionals. And if this isn't enough, consider how our career and technical educators are helping students in addition to those that are currently on their rosters. When schools closed last spring due to COVID-19, students were taking IBC courses for which they were not able to complete industry-based certifications. The career development facilitators immediately began to organize lists of students who needed certifications in order to graduate. The career development facilitators worked with the career and technical teachers and administrators to develop individualized IBC remediation and completion plans for students, including students who aren't able to come to our campuses. To accomplish these plans, many of the CTE teachers are working with students during their planning periods and after school to help them prepare for their IBC exams so they can graduate and have opportunities for entrance into a career path. And to top it off, the CTE educators instinctually are taking on these challenges and additional tasks with an attitude that shouts, "We will do what needs to be done to help our students get through this." If you've heard me speak about our school system's school-to-career programs, you've heard me reference six pillars of our bridge from school to careers. Let it be known from this time forward that the strength of these pillars is the heart of our CTE teachers. In these extraordinary times, it has become clearly evident that our CTE educators care deeply for their students and their success. Therefore, I have all the confidence in the strength of our bridge because it is built on the hearts of these individuals. On behalf of the CTE educators in our system, I'd like to sincerely thank the executive staff and the board for approving this proclamation declaring February as Career and Technical Educators Month. When you highlight our CTE programs in such a way, you are acknowledging how important CTE is for our schools, our community, our economy, and most importantly, our students. And you acknowledge the hard work of every CTE educator in our system who wakes up every day with the mission to equip the students with skills that have the potential to change the trajectory of their lives in our community forever. Thank you for your genuine and continuous support of our CTE programs.
Mr. Seal, the board thanks you and your dedicated CTE teachers for all the effort above and beyond what has ever been required before with that can-do attitude that they will get the job done because that's how much they care about their children. We thank you, and we thank your teachers so very much.
It's an honor to work alongside y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, that was quite a presentation, Mr. Seal. Okay, recognition 3.01, St. Charles Parish Schools United Way Campaign. Now, our Director of Public Information, Ms. Diva Cravetta, will present to the board the results of the 2020 the results of the 2020 School System United Way Campaign.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Good evening, School Board members and Superintendent Ortling. Thank you for this opportunity to present the results of our very successful 2020 School System United Way Campaign. We have continued to exceed expectations, especially during this very difficult year. And the only reason that this campaign was a success again this year is because of all of our stakeholders coming together and really realizing the value and the benefit that United Way brings to our community. The generosity of our employees and students is truly remarkable, especially during such a tough time. This is just one example that we know of the many things that our employees are doing to go above and beyond for our students and as well as those in our community. More than half of our employees, 65% to be exact, donated, and that percentage is actually larger when you consider those who participated in different special events that our schools and departments had. And we set our goal at six figures. We always want to try to achieve that $100,000 mark. And I'm excited to announce tonight that we not only exceeded that mark, but we raised more than $106,000 for the United Way of St. Charles Parish. And the unveiling of that actual amount is $106,817.4. Can't forget the four cents. And it really does become even more impressive when we know that this is such a tough time and we really had to shift how we were going to conduct our virtual campaigns and realizing that our employees were participating in a lot of virtual events and a lot of virtual meetings and a lot of virtual professional development. So they really embraced the virtual campaign. And we are, of course, an organization that is not able to do any type of corporate matching. So, I would just like to thank our parents and our students who participated through different events held at schools such as Gene Days and Penny Wars. Our employees, they really are the reason that we have had such successful campaigns over the years. They have participated in those virtual sessions, and they truly are giving from the generosity of their hearts. And then our superintendent and several executive staff members, who agreed this year as part of that virtual outreach to build excitement for our campaign, to participate in a video parody that we produced to really draw attention to our campaign efforts. And last but not least, I'd like to thank our school-level coordinators. So each one of our schools and different sites has a campaign coordinator who agrees to really initiate the campaign and follow up with them. So I'd like to thank all those school-level coordinators and our district coordinator, Ms. Regina McMillan, for really putting in the time and effort at their individual sites to enhance our campaign this year. So, at this time, Superintendent Ortling and Board President Bernard will present the
I would just like to say, on behalf of the Board of Directors of United Way of St. Charles, staff, and of course, our community, that I want to thank you for our continued partnership. You guys are more than just partners in the financial way. Your employees are very active in our organization and in giving back to the community, and we very much appreciate that and look forward to many more years of partnership. Thank you. Thank you.
I'd also like to just say, you know, this is such an indication of the strong collaborative partnership we do have with United Way, especially during these very trying times. And you've heard it throughout the entire night, how much our community and our stakeholders within the school system have come together, not just for our own students and own families, but also partnerships such as the one with United Way that truly embody what we stand for each and every day. So thank you for representing United Way tonight, Casey.
Thank you. Moving on to our business items this evening. 4.01 Minutes, December 14, 2020 Committee Meetings and December 16, 2020 Regular Meetings.
Move approval. A second.
Have a motion by Mr. Robichaud and a second by Mr. O'Quinn. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.02 Bid Acceptance, Destrahan High School Gym Renovation and Addition. The construction budget for Destrahan High School Gym Renovation and Addition is $4,171,865. Bids were received from 11 contractors on Tuesday, January 19, 2021. The lowest bid was received from NFT Group LLC in the amount of $4,570,000. According to the architect, the bid meets all requirements. Accepting the lowest bid from NFT Group LLC will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, January 25, 2021, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we accept the lowest base bid submitted by NFT Group LLC for Deshran High School Gym Renovation and Addition.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Robichaud. Any discussion? Item 4.02 passes unanimously. Item 4.03 Bid Acceptance, Honville High School Gym Renovation and Addition. The construction budget for Honville High School Gym Renovation and Addition is $4,497,280.32. Bids were received from 10 contractors on Thursday, January 14, 2021. The lowest bid was received from Lamar Construction Company of Louisiana Incorporated in the amount of $4,425,000. According to the architect, the bid meets all requirements. Accepting the lowest bid from Lamar Construction Company of Louisiana Incorporated will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, January 25, 2021, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we accept the lowest bid submitted by Lamar Construction Company.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Alexander and a second by Mr. Savoie. Any discussion? Item 4.04 Bid Acceptance, Mimosa Park Elementary School Buildings A/C/D Renovations. The construction budget for Mimosa Park Elementary School Buildings A/C/D Renovations is $1,292,559. Bids were received from 10 contractors on Thursday, January 14, 2021. The lowest bid, including Alternate 1, was received from Lamar Construction Company of Louisiana Incorporated in the amount of $1,320,750. According to the architect, the bid meets all requirements. Accepting the lowest bid, including Alternate 1, will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, January 25, 2021, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we accept the lowest bid, including Alternate 1, submitted by Lamar Construction Company of Louisiana for Mimosa Park Elementary School Buildings A/C and D renovations.
A second.
Have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn and a second by Mr. Nakant. Any discussion? Item 4.04 passes unanimously. Item 4.05 Bid Acceptance, EJ Landry Alternative Center Roof Replacement. The construction budget for the roof replacement at EJ Landry Alternative Center was $585,721. Bids were received from four bidders for replacement of the roof at EJ Landry Alternative Center on Tuesday, January 12, 2021. The lowest base bid, including Alternative 1, was received from Rycar's Construction LLC in the amount of $562,160. According to the engineer, the bid meets all requirements. Accepting the lowest bid, including Alternate 1, will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, January 25, 2021, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Move approval to accept the lowest base bid, including Alternative Number 1 from Rycar's Construction.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Robichaud and a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Item 4.05 passes unanimously. Item 4.06 Bid Acceptance, Unleaded Fuel. Bids were received from five vendors on Wednesday, January 6, 2021. The lowest bid was received from Retief Oil and Fuel in the amount of .0179 cents per gallon markup. Accepting the lowest bid from Retief Oil and Fuel will allow fuel for the district's vehicles to be purchased at a fair market price. This agenda item was reviewed at the Transportation Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, January 25, 2021, and aligns with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move approval that we accept the lowest bid for unleaded fuel from Retief Oil and Fuel at an estimated cost of $93,000.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn and a second by Mr. Robichaud. Any discussion? Item 4.06 passes unanimously. Item 4.07 Bid Acceptance, Diesel Fuel. Bids were received from four vendors on Wednesday, January 6, 2021. The lowest bid was received from Levine Oil Company in the amount of .0165 cents per gallon markup. Accepting the lowest bid from Levine Oil Company will allow fuel for the district's vehicles to be purchased at a fair market price. This agenda item was reviewed at the Transportation Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, January 25, 2021, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move we accept the lowest bid for diesel fuel from Levine Oil Company at an estimated cost of $389,796.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn and a second by Mr. Robichaud. Do we have any discussion? Item 4.07 passes unanimously. Item 4.08 Bid Authorization Request, Janitorial Supplies. One of the functions of the distribution center is to provide quality products at the best price. In keeping with this practice, the district seeks bids for several janitorial supplies, including several COVID-related products. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, January 25, 2021, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Item 4.08 passes unanimously. Item 4.09 Bid Authorization Request, Child Nutrition Program Food, Supplies, and Equipment. The child nutrition program provides school cafeterias with the necessary food, supplies, and equipment to serve nutritious meals. In order to have the best quality food, supplies, and equipment at the most competitive price, the district is seeking bid authorization for the following: processed food products, frozen food products, produce, milk and milk products, bread and bread products, cafeteria, janitorial, and paper supplies, small cafeteria equipment, large cafeteria equipment. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, January 25, 2021, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Robichaud, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Weird, I'm having a question for this, but number six is cafeteria, janitorial, and paper supplies.
Yes, sir.
We wouldn't do better putting that with the janitorial supplies in the same, I don't know if that'd be Johnny or...
Perhaps Ms. Brown.
I'll ask Ms. Teresa Brown, the Administrator of Auxiliary Services, to come up and answer that question, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Robichaud, for your question. The specific items that we have on this bid are very unique to child nutrition, and it involves several products that we buy. It's not that we couldn't combine them, but it's just very unique items, very specific child nutrition-related items that it's probably in the best interest to keep separate.
Okay, just a question.
Thank you for asking, I appreciate it. Any further discussion? Item 4.09 passes unanimously. Item 4.10 Request for Proposals, Child Nutrition Program Contracted Pizza Delivery Service. The child nutrition program provides school cafeterias with the necessary food to serve nutritious meals. In order to have the best quality pizza, the district is requesting proposals for contracted pizza delivery service. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, January 25, 2021, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President.
Mr. Nakant, I knew you would get that one.
...in preparation for delivery of pizza for the child nutrition program.
Have a motion by Mr. Nakant, his favorite, favorite item that comes up, and a second by Mr. Alexander. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.09 passes unanimously. Item 4.10 passes unanimously. Item 4.11, accounts payable for the month of December 2020. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Request for approval of these transactions is normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, January 25, 2021, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of December 2020 in the total amount of $2,440,585.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sufferin and a second by Mr. Smith. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.11 passes unanimously. Item 4.12, school bus operator recruitment plan. During the 2020-2021 school year, staffing of bus operators has been a challenge due to resignations, retirements, and medical COVID leaves. Administration has developed the School Bus Operator Recruitment Plan to recruit bus operators, fill vacant positions, and develop a pipeline for future vacancies. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, January 25, 2021, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Madam President, I move that we approve the School Bus Operator Recruitment Plan at an estimated cost of $135,262.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nakant and a second by Mr. Savwa. Do we have any discussion?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
They, during the review of the plan that was submitted, made some recommendations that the plan perhaps be amended to include some other avenues for recruiting bus operators. I don't have any problem approving the present plan as presented, but I would like to see this plan amended to include some additional measures that would help us to recruit the bus drivers, because I don't believe that the present plan, as it was presented, I don't believe we will hit the target. So I'd like to see that perhaps maybe at our next meeting or at a time.
I recall you asked about headhunters and that type of outside resource.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, I will say, as of recently, you know, before this plan was actually put into, brought to the Board, we'd already started some internal advertising as well as promotion within our school system. To date, you know, I think we were informed yesterday, day before, from our current efforts, we've been able to identify at least six applicants currently that we possibly could train and have on the roads within three weeks. That is a monumental number of operators, considering where we were prior to this, so we do feel as though the plan is robust, but we also appreciate the feedback, Mr. Smith, and will certainly add those additional things that you had mentioned as part of the recruitment plan going forward to sustain a large pool.
Right, I think that it's important that the plan be a complete plan rather than a one-dimensional plan as was presented. And we may very well be able to reach the target that we're trying to, trying to reach. I don't think we will, but if we do, then fine, accolades for that, but I still believe that the plan ought to be a more comprehensive plan that will not just be a plan to meet those 10 bus drivers that were described as an immediate need, but down the road, because we're going to be faced with some serious driver problems as relates to the future, and our plan for doing that ought to be a comprehensive plan that addresses that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, I appreciate your comments.
I did see the Pirates put out, Workforce Development Office is doing free CDL licensing. I don't know if we can jump on board with that, I don't know if we contacted them yet.
I'll let Ms. Brown comment. Of course, part of this plan is to develop our own CDL, you know, development program as well, but I'm not, I know we are working through workforce development program for advertising, I'm not sure about the CDL.
Right, we have not worked through that, and part of this plan certainly, we can certainly look into that, but part of this plan hopefully addresses the applicants that do come to us that do not have their CDL. We, part of this plan is to help them obtain that, as well as the other trainings that they need and endorsements that they need in order to become a full-time bus driver. But we can certainly look into that.
Thank you, Mr. Robichaux.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Just like to add a comment. If we're going to amend this plan with specific items, I think he...
Take your mask off, I'm going to...
Okay, sorry. I think if we're going to amend this plan with specific items, that these things need to be detailed, and come back with a cost estimate for each one of those that's going to be implemented, we have to vote on that again? We're going to push this over to the next meeting, no more?
My recommendation would be to take, move the plan moving forward, because we are at such a critical juncture right now, to at least implement the plan as is with the understanding that administration will add the additional things requested by Mr. Smith in the committee, so that we do not have to come back to the Board at that time. We will report to the Board next committee meeting in February to show additional costs, and if so, then we would add an amendment to the plan moving forward at the next Board meeting.
As long as you come back with a cost estimate for each one of those. Thank you.
I appreciate that, all good feedback. Thank you so much, Mr. Superintendent. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.12 passes unanimously. Item 4.13, Teacher on Special Assignment School-Based Teacher Support Leader Job Description. The Human Resources Department conducts annual staffing meetings to determine staffing needs based on projected student enrollment. Principals are responsible for utilizing staff to support student achievement. Several schools have decided to use current teachers to support and coach teachers. The current teacher job description does not align to the duties of this position. A job description was developed for Teacher on Special Assignment School-Based Teacher Support Leader. The Superintendent recommends adopting this job description. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, January 25, 2021, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we approve the Teacher on Special Assignment Board-Based Teacher Support Leader Job Description.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nakant and a second by Mr. Savwa. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.13 passes unanimously. Item 4.14, Policy 2.16 Board Meeting, Second Reading and Adoption. Upon review of Board Policy and Procedure 2.16 Board Meeting, significant revisions were required. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, December 14, 2020, and the Board meeting on Wednesday, December 16, 2020, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Madam President, I move that we accept a revision of Board Policy 2.16 Board Meeting for a second reading and adoption.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nakant and a second by Mr. Robichaux. Thank you, Mr. Robichaux, appreciate it. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.14 passes unanimously. Item 4.15, Policy 2.34 Superintendent, Second Reading and Adoption. Upon review of Board Policy and Procedure 2.34 Superintendent, significant revisions were required. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, December 14, 2020, and the Board meeting on Wednesday, December 16, 2020, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Madam President, I move that we accept a revision of Board Policy 2.34 Superintendent for a second reading and adoption.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nakant and a second by Mr. Savwa. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.15 passes unanimously. Item 4.16, Personnel Items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of the St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the Board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, January 25, 2021, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Madam President, I move that we approve the Personnel Items presented to the Board on Monday, January 25.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nakant and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.16 passes unanimously. Item 4.17, Proposed 2021-2022 School Session Calendar, Second Reading and Adoption. School Board Policy mandates that the school board shall adopt a calendar for the forthcoming school session. A committee composed of a school board member, a business and industry representative, central office administrators, principals, teachers, parents, and students prepare a calendar for board approval in accordance with our policy and procedures. Adoption of the calendar for the forthcoming school year as early as possible allows for the information to be disseminated to all stakeholders in a timely fashion. This item was reviewed at the Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, December 14, 2020, and is aligned with Goal A of the Board's Strategic Plan.
I move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn and a second by Mr. Robichaux. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.17 passes unanimously. Item 4.18, Request for Proposals for an Assessment Data Management System. St. Charles Parish Public Schools has used Luminate Education to create and administer curriculum assessments and to store, manage, and disaggregate local and state assessments. An assessment data management system allows instructional staff to analyze student data such as curriculum assessments and LEAK 2025 to guide instruction, develop curriculum, and assess initiatives. This item was reviewed at the Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, January 25, 2021, and is aligned with Goal A of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Madam President, I move that we approve the Request for Proposals for Assessment Data Management System.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Savwa and a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Not me.
Who?
John.
John, your vote?
Thought I had clicked it, but it didn't go.
Item 4.18 passes unanimously. Moving on to our closing items. 5.01, Standing Committee Reports. The Chair will entertain any committee chair reports at this time.
Madam President, the technical committee met on Monday, January 25. There were four items discussed. Bid acceptance of the Destra Heights High School renovation, bid acceptance of the Longview High School renovation. There was a bid acceptance for the first Paul Kelly building, renovation. Fourth item was bid acceptance for EJ Landry Alternative Center Roof Replacement. All four of these items were approved tonight. Total amount of these projects were $10,377,910.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
Madam President, Personnel Policy Committee meeting that Monday, Monday, covered several items. Those items included the School Bus Operator Recruitment Plan, Teacher on Special Assignment School-Based Teacher Support Leader Job Description, Policy 2.22 Voting at Board Meeting, that was a committee meeting moment. Also, committee meeting on Impact Study on Reviewing Information Regarding Children, Classified Employees Possibly Coming Into Our School System. We also discussed personnel items. Of those five items, three of them were brought to the Board tonight and voted on. In addition to that, for previous meetings, we also voted on second reading Policy 2.34 Superintendent and Policy 2.16 Board Meetings. And, Madam President, the report.
Thank you, Mr. Nakant.
Madam President, the Technology Committee hadn't had a chance to meet yet, but we'll be having a meeting on Thursday, February 2nd, 3rd, 4th, at 11 o'clock, and you're on the committee, and also Mr. Alexander, so we'll meet with Ms. Stephanie Stein on that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savwa, I look forward to meeting with y'all.
Madam President, the Finance and Audit Committee comprised of myself and Mr. Alexander and Mr. Robichaux met on Monday, January 25, and covered six items. Four of those six items came to the full Board during this meeting and were approved. Those four items were bid authorization requests for janitorial supplies, bid authorization requests for child nutrition program food, supplies, and equipment, request for proposals for child nutrition program contracted pizza delivery service, and accounts payable for the month of December 2020. Also, for committee discussion only, Charmaine Williams, the Director of Child Welfare and Attendants, Internal Auditor Adam Neighbors, and Jerry Smith, Executive Director of Student Services, provided a financial update on the before and after-school childcare program. And the committee was presenting information relative to a request for an industrial tax exemption from the Green Shutter Tea Company. The committee will consider this request further at its next committee meeting, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin.
Madam President, the Insurance Committee met Monday also. We discussed the renewal for our health insurance. We will be bringing that to the full Board next month for a decision on our health insurance renewal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robichaux.
Madam President, the Transportation Committee met on Monday and had two items we discussed, that was the fuel items, the diesel fuel and the gasoline. Both those items are brought to the Board table tonight and were approved.
Thank you, Mr.
That concludes my report.
I appreciate it. Our Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee also met Monday, January 25. That's myself, Mr. O'Quinn, and Mr. Savwa on that committee. Two items were brought forward and approved this evening. That would be the Request for Proposal for an Assessment Data Management System, and then the Proposed 2021-2022. And then the proposed 2021-2022 school session calendar for the second reading and adoption was also approved this evening. For committee only, we had Dr. Odinda and Ms. Dunmiles, Stephanie Dunmiles, who came and gave us a beautiful report on our Ready Start Program. And then we had an accountability of our academic progress update by our Assistant Superintendent Eric Gragnier, very informative, and clearly showed us how important it is for our children to be in the classroom and for those who are in e-learning, the struggles they are experiencing. So, Ms. Gragnier, we thank you so much for that report, we truly do, and pray that our babies will be, all be back in our schools soon. Thank you. Okay, so that concludes our standing committee reports this evening. We go on to 5.02, the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we have a video to share with you highlighting our 2020 quality profile. This document produced each fall provides our community with relevant data and information pertaining to the school system. As a complement to the quality profile, we also have an updated St. Charles Parish Public Schools At-A-Glance document that provides an overview of our school system for easy reference. All St. Charles Parish residents received a postcard in the mail with information on how to view the 2020 quality profile. Let's take a look at the video.
St. Charles Parish Public Schools is proud to present its 2020 Quality Profile. The Quality Profile is a complete and transparent report on how the school system is performing in areas that matter most to our community. The Quality Profile contains data and information centered around aspects of our high-quality AAA school system, incorporating academics, athletics, and the arts. While some data was unavailable due to schools being closed in March 2020, we felt it was still important to provide our community with this report. The document is aligned with our Long Range Strategic Action Plan and also includes a special section on our COVID-19 response. The first few pages of the Quality Profile showcase data and information pertaining to Goal A, student achievement and success. While test scores and achievement data are one indicator of success, they do not represent the whole child in what is most important to our community. Opportunities and access are a priority for our students. As you can see, there is truly something for everyone through the number of different clubs, organizations, arts, athletics, and extracurricular activities offered in our school system. A key part to our success is hiring the best and brightest employees who contribute to making a difference for every student at every moment. We are the largest employer in the parish and offer a competitive salary and benefits package. Along with our core business of teaching and learning and our commitment to hiring the best and the brightest, the Quality Profile also features information on operational effectiveness encompassing technology, finances, and support services. These, along with safe and supportive learning environments, play a crucial role in providing students with an optimal learning experience. Our support services and facilities are second to none. Safety and security is a top priority, and stakeholder engagement is essential for open and honest communication. For more information on these topics, initiatives moving forward, and our COVID-19 response, be sure to view our 2020 Quality Profile. The Quality Profile is available at stcharles.k12.la.us. To request a paper copy, contact the Public Information Department at 985-785-3104. We hope you find this report informative and beneficial.
I'd like to personally thank Ms. Steve Cravetta and her department, Mason, especially for creating this video and quality profile for all of our stakeholders. Thank you, Ms. Cravetta. Spring 2021 Community Education. Community Education Department is pleased to announce our first-ever virtual spring 2021 semester. The announcement will be published on the St. Charles Parish Public Schools Community Education page at www.stcharles.k12.la.us/communitie-ed and on social media. The community ed flyer containing over 30 virtual or outdoor classes, including Spanish, French, piano, travel, dance, financial, fitness, pets, health, and wellness, photography, and journaling, along with registration and payment information, will be available on the website and also emailed to participants for their convenience. Copies of the spring 2021 flyer will also be available at various locations in and around St. Charles Parish. Registration will begin Monday, January 25, and continue through Friday, February 19. Classes start the week of March 1st. For additional information or assistance, please contact the Community Education Department or the part-time phone number at 985-785-7268, and leave a message for a return call. Each graduating high school senior in a Louisiana public high school is required, as part of his or her individual graduation plan, to complete either the free application for federal student aid or complete and sign a parental nonparticipation form. In order to meet this graduation requirement, parents must either complete the FAFSA application located at fafa.gov or contact your child's school counselor at Destran High School or Honda High School to complete the parental nonparticipation form. Additional questions regarding the Louisiana Department of Education graduation requirement can be answered by your child's school counselor or principal. COVID update. I implore your help in keeping our schools open to service all of our students. As our community continues to see increases in COVID-19 cases, and actually, I'm pleased to report, for two consecutive weeks, the community positivity rate has decreased, and that is a direct result of our schools being open and mitigating the potential spread of COVID-19. In turn, when the community rate is high, it increases the number of students, faculty members, and bus operators having to quarantine for extended periods of time. When this occurs, it adversely impacts student learning and strains our ability to operate efficiently. While we have been able to successfully mitigate the spread of COVID-19 with little to none in our school buildings due to the safety measures we have in place throughout our buildings, our buses, and campuses, community spread continues to negatively impact our system. We all play our part in preventing the spread of COVID-19 inside and outside of our schools, and I ask that you please help us keep our schools open by having your family continue to wear face coverings when inside and outside of school, practice social distancing, wash hands frequently, and stay home when sick. Thank you again for your continued patience, support, and understanding as we continue to navigate these very challenging but opportunistic times. Madam Superintendent, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ortling, I appreciate it.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Robichaud and a second by Mr. Nakka. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned.